Number 23, 2020 Urban Water Management Plan and Water Shortage Contingency Plan. Ms. Langley.
Yes, before I get started, I would like to introduce Greg Young of Tullian Young. He's with us virtually on the screen. And Tullian Young is the firm that prepared the city's Urban Water Management Plan and Water Shortage Contingency Plan. Here's a picture of our draft 2020 Urban Water Management Plan. So, the Urban Water Management Planning Act was signed into law in 1983 and requires urban water suppliers serving over 3,000 customers to prepare and adopt an urban water management plan every five years. So, our last plan was adopted in 2016 for the year of 2015. Since then, the legislator has amended the act to require additional details in urban water management plans, including addressing resilience to drought and climate change, demonstrate water supply reliability in a normal year, single dry year, and droughts lasting five years over a 20-year planning horizon. And the urban water management plan provides a water management planning foundation outlining the city's past and current, as well as projected future, water supply and demand conditions. This table reflects the city's four surface water supplies. So, we have State Water Resources Control Board License 13855, of which we have an annual allotment of 6,500 acre feet, and the time of use is September through June. State Water Resources Control Board Permit 18558, in which we have an annual allotment of 9,000 acre feet. Time of use is October through June. North Yuba Water District Contract, of which we have 4,500 acre feet. Typically, this, we utilize this as our summer supply. And then, we have the, we're DWR state water contractors, because we participated in the state water project. So, we have 9,600 acre feet, and that can be utilized year-round. In addition, we have a backup groundwater well at the water treatment plant that supplies approximately 1,200 acre feet, which we can utilize as needed. Historically, we only bring that well online during drought situations. So, there's a couple of things that I want to note, that the North Yuba Water District Agreement remains in effect through December 31, 2035. The representatives of the district and the city will meet sometime between December 31, 2032, and June 1, 20... December 31, 2031, and June 1, 2032, to discuss the potential to further extend the agreement. The 2012 rate at the time was $70 per acre foot. The current rate is $70 per acre foot, plus the CPI for the December proceeding. So, right now, it's close to $90 per acre foot. The district and the city intend that the prices that the city pays the district for water made available under this agreement during 2026 through 2035 will be set to reflect the market prices for similar long-term water sales during these periods. The districts and the city will meet in 2024 to attempt to reach agreement on the prices that will apply. Similar long-term water sales will mean sales of water under agreements with terms greater than one year to municipal water purveyors, where the agreements were executed sometime between January 1, 2015, and December 31, 2024. So, what does all of that mean? We're currently paying just under about $90 an acre foot, per our contract with them. We will begin discussions in 2024 to set the price for the remaining 10 years of the contract. What's so important about that is we're going to be using similar contracts that were formed between 2015 and 2024. Well, we are in the drought. Water is a very expensive commodity right now. And so, just to prepare council and our customers, that we're not going to be getting water for just under $90 an acre foot. And so, it's really important to keep that in mind as we move forward. And this is also a contract that we pay for the water regardless of whether or not we use it. With the Department of Water Resources State Water Project, our 2022 Statement of Charges, so the bill that they're projecting for 2022, is $1,027,807. So, the other thing about the DWR State Water Project is even though we show 9,600 acre feet, in actuality, our allocation, our average allocation's about 68%. And as of, you know, for 2021, we're at 5%. And again, this is a contract that we pay the full amount regardless of the amount of water that we receive.
Have a quick question. Do you mind?
Go ahead.
Do we use that, that $30,800?
So, could be, on paper, we have $30,800. In terms of actuality of what we have available, it's less than that, and I'll go into that in this next slide. There's several reasons for that. Part of that is because these water supplies are available during non-summer uses, when your water demand's lower. And so, we don't typically maximize these, and we don't pay for these license or permit. But, we don't typically maximize our allotment of water under this permit and license. For North Yuba Water District, yes, we do typically use the full amount. And then, for DWR State Water Project, like I said, the last few years, it's fluctuated quite a bit in terms of availability. So, that one, we're really, the amount that we get, we do try to bank into carryover water, so that we have that insurance supply as we go into dry years. And so, this one's really important for us, because it does tend to provide an insurance policy. So, in my next table, you'll see what we're predicting to have under, we look at the single dry year, normal year, and then also five years of drought.
Follow-up question, let's just use the 9,000 acre feet in October through June. If we don't use all of that, do we still pay for the full allotment, or only what we use?
So, we don't pay for the State Water Resource Control Board License or Permit.
We just have that...
We only pay for North Yuba Water District, the DWR.
So, conceivably, and you talked about bank, and hopefully, I'm not getting too far ahead of you here. If we wanted to build our own storage to have water, is that cost-effective or not?
It will get to a point that it is.
Okay.
Yes.
Sorry.
That's okay. And for reference purposes, how much water we used last year was about 15,600 acre feet. We're on track to utilize about that same amount for this year. With my next presentation related to water conservation, you know, if people conserve the 15% that's recommended, then that amount would decrease, which would hopefully allow us to retain some of the carryover water that we have, because right now, we're projecting to utilize a good portion of our carryover water to meet this year's demands. Okay. So, under a normal year, and you can see that the planning horizon goes out to 2045, our supply is 28,928 acre feet. The demand goes from about 15,000 acre feet up to 17, just under 18,000 acre feet. And so, you can see, under a normal year, we have enough water to serve the city under these. And there's, in the water management plan, there are projections for population increases, so that takes that into account as they are determining the volume of water to be utilized. Under a single dry year, you can see that under a single dry year, the supply amount decreases, and that's based upon assumptions in terms of curtailments of the State Water Resources Control Board Permit, as well as availability of water under the DWR State Water Project. Again, the demand is different, but overall, you can see even under a single dry year, that we have sufficient water. And we've seen that historically, too, you know. And then, as you get into the, this one might be a little bit difficult to read, but this looks at five years of a drought, five consecutive dry years, from 2025 to 2045. And what's important under this one, the sweepy allocation is determined, is estimated to be 45% in year one, 30% in year two, 5% in year three, 15% in year four, and 30% in year five. And this mirrors pretty closely what happened in the 2013 to 2016 drought, in terms of the sweepy allocations. So, even with those reduced supplies, you can see that we still, even at year five, we still have sufficient water to be able to serve demands. But, there's a caveat to that. Through active management, the city has reliable water supplies available for its service area through 2045. This is going to require coordinated management between the city and our contract partners, so DWR, North Yuba Water District, in order to render the supply reliable in all-year types through 2045. It's also going to require that we consider projects for implementation to maximize those water supplies. So, as the mayor noted, in terms of storage, rather than build huge above-ground storage tanks, we would build below-ground storage in the aquifers. And so, there's an aquifer that's about 450 feet down. That's a fairly confined aquifer that doesn't move very much in any given year, so it's pretty stable. What happens is you would bring water through the water treatment plant during the non-summer months to really maximize those non-summer supplies, inject them into the aquifer, and it almost creates an underground storage reservoir, so that during the summer months, you can then pull that water back out, and then run it through your treatment plant and put it into your distribution system. It's still surface water. It's not groundwater. But, it allows you to fully maximize those, that permit and license, so that we can get the benefit of the amount that we're entitled to. Another big thing would be to recirculate water treatment plant process water. We lose quite a bit of water just through the treatment plant process, through backwashing and things like that. So, to be able to recirculate that, bring it back through the front end of the plant to treat it, that would also help. And then, also continue to address water losses within the distribution system. On a separate note, we're also required to comply with SBX 7-7, which is a 2020 urban water use target. It required a reduction of statewide average per capita daily water consumption of 20% by December 31, 2020. I'm happy to show that our 2020 target was 192 gallons per capita per day, and our actual is 179 gallons per capita per day. And so, you know, with that previous drought, customers really changed their water habits. And also, with the implementation of a lot of low-flow appliances and things like that, we've seen an overall reduction in that per capita use. So, before I move on to the Water Shortage Contingency Plan, are there any questions related to the Urban Water Management Plan? And I will say, this is in draft form. We will be continuing to make minor modifications as we find, you know, spelling things or, additional clarification. But, the intent is to submit it to the Department of Water Resources fairly soon.
Through the mayor. Diana, when you were talking about DWR, and what was the other one for the state permit?
A State Water Resources Control Board.
Right. So, could there be changes in those permits, based on how severe the drought? If, hopefully, it doesn't happen, but you know, if it keeps at this state, at this stage and keeps going, could there, could there be implications from the state to reduce some of those, you know, allowances that we have?
Yeah, I'll attempt to answer this, and then Greg might want to chime in on this one as well. Definitely with the permit, that one is subject to more curtailments than the license, and we've seen that one curtailed. It's typically in this type of situation, where it's a drier year, in late March, early April, where you'll receive the notice that you can no longer draw water under that permit. The license has definitely been more stable, and it's based upon the time for which you applied for that State Water Resources Control Board use. And so, you know, that's the short answer. Greg, would you like to add to that response?
Yeah, sure. Can, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. So, just to build a little bit on what Diana said, that right now, the state is essentially curtailing everything that's post-1914 issued water rights on seniority. But, your, both your water supplies are not typically available across the summer months anyway, and so, you don't rely on those typically. And in the analysis we put together for a dry condition, we represented those as being even less reliable and less available across the months of summer. And so, that's consistent with how we've represented it in the plan, is what you're really seeing in this year. So, it's not a water supply you're relying on, as Diana noted. The carryover water you have in storage, which is, in paper, is actually in San Luis Reservoir, down outside of, well, it's south of the, south of Tracy and south of Patterson. But, in actuality, it comes out of Oroville and gets exchanged. That is the water you are going to be relying upon most of this year, but you want to try and manage as much of that into next year, in case next year is dry. And that's the goal at this point.
All right. So, any other questions on the Urban Water Management Plan? Okay. Then, I will move on to the Water Shortage Contingency Plan. So, the Water Shortage Contingency Plan addresses possible conditions in which the water supply available to customers is insufficient to meet the normally expected customer water use. It describes the city's strategy for allocating water during such water supply shortages, while assuring customers that at all times, it will meet the minimum health and safety requirements of a drinking water purveyor. There's quite a few required elements of a Water Shortage Contingency Plan here. I've got two pages just outlining the required elements. You have to look at your water supply reliability. It establishes six standard water shortage levels, which I'll go into, your communication protocols, also description of legal authorities, monitoring and reporting requirements, special water feature distinction. And so, it's a good portion of the Urban Water Management Plan, but it's also meant to be a standalone document as well. So, the six stages that were identified as part of the plan include stages one through six. So, it varies from water alert at stage one, which is up to 10% conservation target. Stage two is up to 20%, which is a water warning. Stage three is up to 30%, which is a severe shortage. Stage four is up to 40%, which is a critical shortage. Stage five is up to 50%, which is a water crisis, and then greater than 50%, which is a water emergency. And I'd just like to note, this doesn't necessarily have to do with the drought. This could be related to, there's a catastrophic event that limits our availability of drawing water from the river. There's a lot of different circumstances that could lead to needing to implement the Water Shortage Contingency Plan. So, with stage one, the plan calls for an introductory stage-one drought response, during which customers are informed of possible shortages and asked to voluntarily conserve 10%. In addition, customers are prohibited from wasting water or unreasonably using water for beneficial purposes. Under stage two, the city will encourage community-oriented voluntary conservation measures, enforced conservation measures, and implement mandatory water use reduction measures to decrease demand by up to 20%. Stage three includes all of the actions under stage one and two, and is focused on continuing to encourage customers to voluntarily reduce water use for turf watering, filling pools, et cetera, and may include additional mandatory watering restrictions. Stage four includes everything leading up to that point, but intensifies implementation and enforcement. Stage five is, the primary focus of stage five is to ensure the protection of the water supply for all public health and safety purposes. And then, stage six requires only use of water for human health and safety purposes. A water shortage declaration would be made by resolution of the city council, as we will be requesting of the next item on the agenda. Administrative discretion is delegated to the Public Works Director under the direction of the city manager. So, with all of that said, supply augmentation actions that we are currently doing to, you know, just as part of this current situation that we're in, is water treatment plant backup well. We have that operational well at the water treatment plant that can provide about 1,200 acre feet. We also have wells five, eight, and nine, which are in the distribution system, that we are, they haven't been in operation for about 10 years, so we're getting those back operational. So, should we need to, we could turn those on and blend the groundwater with the surface water in the distribution system. We also have an emergency intertie with Cal Water that goes through the new Fifth Street Bridge, and that could, in an emergency situation, be turned on to supply water to either jurisdiction. Aquifer storage recovery, that is something that we would like to pursue. And in fact, we've, we are soliciting proposals right now for the installation of a second groundwater well at the water treatment plant that we would want to convert in the future to aquifer storage recovery. And then, another option is to reduce water system pressure. That's not an option that we like. It would be a minor reduction of the water system pressure, because we still have to maintain flows for fire service. So, for compliance and enforcement, which is, this is something that unfortunately, we had to do in the last drought. So, under a first violation, you receive a written warning. A second violation, it's a $50 surcharge added to the next monthly water bill. A third violation is $100, and then, fourth and subsequent violations are $250. And what happens is, we have staff that do water patrol, where they go out and look for properties that are in violation of the emergency water restrictions. They take timestamped photos and date stamped, and so, the resident can see that their address with a timestamp, that they were watering or doing something that they're not supposed to be doing. The photo is attached to the letter that is sent to the person to whom the water bill is sent, notifying them of the violation, and giving them one week to make the necessary adjustments. And then, if a second or subsequent violation is issued, that's when they receive the surcharges. Another important thing to note is groundwater. Many of the city's parks, particularly the larger parks, are irrigated with groundwater, and some property owners have wells for irrigation. So, those properties may not be subject to the same mandatory watering restrictions, or subject to the mandatory watering restrictions at all. At the parks, we've asked, Brad McIntyre's coordinating with his department, to evaluate the irrigation systems at all of the parks, as well as the street medians and landscape strips, to make sure that we're not wasting water as a city. But, they will also be posting signs at the parks that are irrigated with the groundwater to let our residents know that those parks are irrigated with groundwater. With the special water feature distinction, this is important, because special water features are relatively small discretionary use, but they can have a big impact on the community. And so, we've tried to provide some discretion in there, in terms of when special water features have to be turned off. For instance, the splash pads at Shanghai Garden Park and then Regency Park, you know, council would have the discretion to be able to keep those operational, up to a certain point, recognizing the public benefit compared to the nominal usage associated with those water features. So, fiscal impact without an approved urban water management plan, the city may not be eligible to receive grants, loans, or drought assistance through DWR. An alternative would be to conduct a public hearing and direct staff to make modifications to the Urban Water Management Plan and/or the Water Shortage Contingency Plan. And so, the recommendation tonight is to conduct a public hearing, adopt a resolution adopting the 2020 Urban Water Management Plan, and then also adopt a resolution adopting the Water Shortage Contingency Plan. With that, I'd be happy to answer questions.
Council questions for Diana.
Through the mayor. Diana, since we just had that long conversation with the delinquent accounts, right?
Yes.
And noticing that you have those penalties for water, and say, some of these folks, you know, they're not paying us, they're going to water as much as they want, how are we going to distinguish that penalty? Again, because we just talked about that for at length, so...
Yeah, I will say, so, we're not at the point that we're doing enforcement, the enforcement at all. We're not doing that. And when we did in the previous drought, actually, we obtained a lot of compliance. It's not intentional, I think, for many of our customers, that they're trying to waste water. It's either they didn't know they had a broken sprinkler head, or they didn't know that they didn't, they're not supposed to water on that day. And so, with that first violation, they get the written warning. A lot of people corrected there. Also, you know, when people, if they have more violations, we really listen to what happened. There's a lot of reasons why those violations continue, and so, we try to be very thoughtful in terms of how we proceed with, you know, putting those surcharges on the bills. And so, if you were to go back and look at the last drought, we actually did not end up having to do very many surcharges. I will note, there was one customer that, I don't know what was going on, but it was multiple notices, multiple, and continued, but he, that person was very, very rare.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Anybody else? Okay. The public hearing for the 2020 Urban Water Management Plan and Water Shortage Contingency Plan is now open. If there are any members of the public who would like to address the council on this issue, please provide your statement via public comment, state your name and address for the record. Do we have any comments from the public on this item?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
My name is Thomas Burns. Okay. So, I want to say that I'm opposed to that prospect that she said, where they're going to re, take your wastewater and reuse it.
No, that wasn't one of the items that was up there, no.
Yeah, there was, can you clarify that? There was one section where you talked about...
So, the aquifer storage recovery?
Not that, no, it wasn't that. It was another... It had to do with reusing the water supply.
The backwash water at the water treatment plant? Okay. So, the backwash water at the water treatment plant is actually, as we are treating the water, the surface water that comes through the plant, the water goes through filters, and so, those filters collect a lot of debris, that type of thing. We backwash those filters to clean them. That water currently goes into ponds, where it percolates and evaporates. Instead of going into ponds, we would collect it and run it back through the treatment process, so that we can fully capture and reuse that water. It's not wastewater, in the sense of sanitary sewer wastewater.
Well, I'm glad you clarified that, because I am totally opposed to that program, okay? But, I've heard people speculate on it, on using that. But, for me, there's been wars fought over water, okay? And there's been a huge amount of commotion over water. It's huge. And I believe that one of the greatest weapons in the world is controlling the water supply. So, I also did quite a lot of study on water, and I believe, you might find this hard to believe, okay? But, I don't find it too hard to believe myself. But, I believe there is weather warfare out there. I believe it's been used in the past on other nations. We know that for a fact. And it may very well be being used on us, okay? Weather warfare. Might do a little research on that for yourself. There's also the document called Silent Weapons for Quiet Wars. Quite an interesting read. So, right now, I feel like we're being hit on every side. Wildfires, drought, COVID, the COVID Communist Program. So, anyway, also, when I brush my teeth these days, I turn the faucet off, okay? And I'm, I'm one for conserving water. I already knew this was coming down the pipeline. But, I do not plan to let my grass die and go to a total brown, you know, scorched earth policy. So, I want to say this, I have two videos on my phone, okay? One of them is at the beloved Richland Housing Center, okay? Go by there in the morning, and you got a huge pressure, and a sprinkler head going sky-high for days and days on end, and just running down the gutter constantly. Where is your maintenance guy? Asleep at the wheel, okay? Over here, at the base of the 10th Street Bridge, okay? And I've got the video, so if you want to watch it, it's very, it's available to you. So, at the base of the 10th Street Bridge, you have, coming into Yuba City, you know the spot where all the deadbeats panhandle right there. Anybody familiar with that spot? The, there's a little triangle there, where this traffic goes off toward Market Street, or you can turn left, go under the bridge, or you can go straight along and get back on by Twin Cities Equipment Rental, okay? That little island there has like one bush on it, okay? And that, that whole island there is being watered for this one bush, and I'm not kidding you, that there is water running across the road, and all the way down to the 7-Eleven that sits down there. And I think to myself, why don't you clean up your own house before you try to clean up everybody else's house? I mean, the waste from the, whoever's responsible for that area is unbelievable. So, I'm not, I'm not for this Gestapo-type tactics either, of going around citing people for water situations. I do believe that most people are responsible. As far as the general person... I, I do believe that most people are responsible, as far as the general person, you know, in, in our city. But some people are asleep at the wheel, and they just need to be told. But, it's not our job, I mean, I don't feel like it's my job to, to let the city know, or the county know, you know? Those, they have people that need to police their own, their own properties. That's my comment.
Thank you for making us aware of those locations. Anybody else from the public? Online?
No comments.
Hearing no further comment on this issue, I'm closing the public hearing and bringing the matter back to the council. Council.
I move to adopt a resolution adopting the 2020 urban water management plan, and authorizing the Public Works Director, excuse me, I haven't meant, to submit the plan to the California Department of Water Resources. That's B. C, adopt the resolution adopting the water shortage contingency plan, and not, excuse me, and authorizing the Public Works Director to submit the plan to the California Department of Water Resources.
Second? I have a motion by Councilperson Espendola, a second by Councilperson, Person Kirchner. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none. Item 23 passes unanimously.